Welcome to the city council work session for Tuesday, October first, twenty twenty four. First item for discussion on the agenda is automated traffic enforcement camera program. Chief.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, as chief's walking up to the podium. I know that. The today's Gazette article or today's Gazette paper had an article about this very topic. And I just want to remind the viewing audience at home. As council knows. That this presentation. Had been planned as part of the implementation of this program. Council's direction as we went through the very deliberative process to establish this program. Council. Requested us to come back at a yearly report. We shared that at the last meeting that today was going to be the day. And that was published in the agenda that went out on Friday. So. I just want to make sure that the folks watching at home or sitting in the audience are aware that this is a proactive. Presentation and it's not something that is being done reactively, but has been done. Under the guidance and direction of the city council when we first implement in the program. I think that is a very important point. For the public to understand. And just how we work on their behalf and in concert with the city council. So.
Thank you. Chief.
Yep. So this is, this is the annual report. So if you remember right, we turned our cameras on for citations on September eighteenth of twenty three. And so I pulled that all the way up till September eighteenth of twenty twenty four to kind of show you what we've, what we've seen. Again, the locations, the speed camera only is the mobile unit. We've got fixed locations. That are red light and speed cameras at highway one hundred and East Post and highway thirteen and one fifty one. I do have information about the permits that I tucked into the back of this that Rachel was nice enough to allow me to submit PowerPoint slides on today. So. We'll talk about the permitting piece at the end. But I think it's important to kind of see the statistics leading up to that. So you kind of know what we're talking about when it comes to the permit. So the total number of citations for that one year time. Again, it's twenty, twenty thousand tickets total. The bulk of those speeding tickets is the eight thousand one hundred and fifty two. The bulk of those things are coming from the mobile unit. That was approximately seven thousand citations. The tickets, the red light tickets, eleven thousand nine seventy two, those are all coming from either highway one hundred. And East Post Road or highway thirteen and one fifty one. One of the things that we've seen is the turning right on red. We've had that discussion with multiple people. You can turn right on red, but you have to stop. The cameras only generate a citation if they're going thirteen miles an hour when they make that turn. So. We've had that discussion multiple times with people. So here's the mobile unit. And again, when, when we talk about the permitting. We'll talk a little bit about these community requests, but during that one year time, we had seventy one requests for the mobile unit to be put on people's streets. I know when we were talking about utilizing this technology for traffic enforcement. We talked about the inefficiencies that we saw when we timed out having to have an officer go out and sit. Based on a complaint. And I think the number was something like twenty four hours. And it generated like two, two citations and, and one OWI over a twenty four hour period. So it's much more efficient. We've had seventy six actual deployments, seven thousand thirty four citations. We had a couple of places here in town that we'll, we'll touch on briefly that we've had. Upwards of three and four hundred citations generated in one sitting. There's a couple of busier streets here in town that we see with the cross sections of traffic. But again, those community requests, we try to be responsive to those. There is some drawbacks to that. Good examples like Winslow Road. We have to have a shoulder to sit on. We can't sit up in somebody's yard. We can't block the sidewalk. So some streets are just not feasible for us to use. And we have to try to come up with other ways of doing it, but we try to be as responsive as we can. So here's, here's the numbers from East Post and highway one hundred. There was a total of thirty nine hundred and four citations. Two thousand nine hundred and forty four of those are red light violations. Again, you kind of see that downward trend. So I'm encouraged by the numbers when we first started. Our vendor census Gadsso had said, look, when you first do this, you're going to see a spike and then you're going to see that number go down. You kind of see that downward trend. When you get over to June and July. That's where the. Construction zone began. And so you kind of see there with a, especially in July where the speed numbers really jumped. And that's because the speed limit up there dropped to forty five miles an hour instead of fifty five. And so we kind of saw that, that swap there. August and September are lower than the other two. In the summertime, and that's because the. Westbound camera, they had to take it out because they're putting that right turn lane in, going westbound on one hundred. So they took that camera down. So there's only one camera operating up there this summer. You can thank Mike Barkal over there. So again, this is the accident statistics. Now. I talked about with, with the data we're looking at. It is a one year period, but it's kind of a snapshot in time. It's hard to make, you know, firm decisions. On this, but, but when you look at what we've seen just this first year. You know, we're averaging one accident per month with nine injuries. The previous five years, that average was like one point four accidents per month. If you extrapolate out that, that, you know, one accident per month over the next four or five years, if the data holds. You know, you're talking thirty, forty fewer accidents. Are the cameras contributing to that? I like to think they are. But again, we're just looking at this one year period. So it's kind of hard to make that firm determination. So this is thirteen and one fifty one. This is our other fixed camera. So this one. We cover awful, we cover three directions. We don't cover eastbound on one fifty one. We cover both ways on highway thirteen. And coming into town on one fifty one. And I should have told you back on the. East Post Road and highway one hundred, the cameras are only recording highway one hundred. They don't record traffic on East Post Road. Which I think partly plays into maybe the little bit of the numbers that are different here. But here you've got nine thousand one hundred and eighty six citations, nine thousand and twenty eight of those are red lights. Again, when, when we talk about the permitting process, I think that's important. You know, when we looked at this, when we were doing our research leading it up to this, the speeding was an issue leading into town. On one hundred and, and north of town and, and on highway thirteen and, and one fifty one as well. But the red lights, I think, is where we're seeing the problems with the accidents. Again. You can kind of see it's almost identical where you sort of see that downward trend. As we moved along, the further we go, and then you kind of see that spike in the summer. June and July, I, I don't really have an explanation for this intersection. I don't know why that's gone back up. It's not as high as it was back in November, December of last year. Increased traffic. I, I don't know. But again, the accident data going back five years, the average has been one point five accidents per month with forty nine injuries. And this one year period, it's one point one six accidents per month with just two injuries. So again, I'm encouraged by that. But I want to see what's going to happen the next, the next year or so to see exactly how much. How much that's going to drop. So the financial aspect, I know this, this has been talked about on social media and other places. And so again, this is. Out there for everybody to see. The total fines paid is a million sixty. The contractor share or what we pay in expenses to our vendors and the collection agencies. Are up there and the cities, the net share of the cities is six hundred and, what's that, six hundred and sixty five? Thousand for the year. You can see the total percentages that the city collected off that minus the expenses. So the delinquent collections, the way it works. Census Gadsos, the vendor, they send out the first two notifications to the, the car owner, the vehicle owner. If they don't get a response back at that third month, it gets turned over to collections. Collections then goes in, verifies the address, makes sure it's up to date because sometimes people don't re-register their car when they move. They, they'd send out two more notifications to the person telling them, hey, you, you owe these, these tickets. Or you have to appeal them. If they don't get something back, they call it bad debt and it comes back to us. And then it's up to us. To go into the municipal fraction. I'm sorry, I got my slides out of order here, but I'll talk about the municipal fractions here in a minute. So when people contest them, when, when they first get the citations, they can contest them. Again, out of that twenty thousand, we've had about a thousand that have been contested. And. Eleven percent of those, the person has been ruled not liable. This does not count the number of citations that come out. That are dropped. We have varying. Issues there that if people are yielding to an emergency vehicle and they can show us that and we can go back at the video and look. We'll drop them before it ever gets to the contested part. There's, there's various other things in there that, that would account for that. A lot of times we will get them and, and it, it looks like when the. Person calls in that, hey, that, that license plate's not on my car anymore. Here's my registration, things like that. And we can do that before we get to that formal contested phase. We do that as well. So the orders to abate. So what happens is after. They don't respond to the vendor, they don't respond to the collections agency. We send them a letter from, from Kara. And then we file the municipal fraction. So we're just now getting into this because it's a longer process. We want to give people time. We're seeing right now about fifty four percent of people are voluntarily paying. The citations before we ever have to go to collections or anything else. I'd like to see that up around sixty or sixty five percent. I, I think. I'd like to see a hundred percent, but I know that's probably unreasonable. But if we could get up to that sixty percent, I'd be happy. And I think the more that we get into the process, the better we're going to do. But we've had nine judgments, seven payment plans. Total collected today. I know we've got additional stack pending that came after September seventeenth. Of this year. So I didn't want to include those in the one year. The one year data. So the permits. Let me back up. Overall, with, with what we see so far this year, I'm, I'm encouraged. I like that the accidents are going down. I think the, the data in there that to me is telling is, is when you look at the speeding tickets. Roughly sixty percent are going to Marion drivers. And I'm not saying that to say that we're trying to target Marion drivers or out of town drivers. But there's a reason I say that. When you see those speeding tickets, most of those are coming from that mobile unit and most of those are being deployed into neighborhoods. Where you're obviously going to see more Marion residents living. The speed cameras, the fixed ones, that number is. Drop it between eighteen and twenty five or thirty percent are, are Marion drivers, which tells me. I think they know they're there and it's, it's causing them to change their behavior is the way I kind of interpret that. So again, I'm, I'm encouraged by that. Can I prove that definitively? No, but it kind of makes sense. When they know where those cameras are at, that they're going to change how they're doing. I don't know that we've got more out of town drivers coming through those two intersections than we do Marion and residents. That, that would explain that difference in there, but. That's kind of where I'm, I'm leaning on that. The permit, so. We got notified yesterday. With the new state ordinance that came out. In May, we were allowed to continue operating our cameras as, as they were up until we were either given a, a permit or we were denied a permit. We put the application in. June thirtieth, it was due July first. They had to give us an answer by October first and. It popped into my email yesterday at four oh two P M. So. Overall, we had requested fifty eight locations. We had twenty nine of those approved. So for the locations, we had to show them that. Yes, we had a problem. We had to show them that other methods we tried that were not successful as to why cars were running the red or speeding. And again, I'll back up. The permit only applies to speeding. It has nothing to do with the red light functions of the cameras. We can operate those as we always have. They're not, they're not part of the permitting process. This is only for the speed cameras, the fixed ones and the mobile. So we put in twenty nine locations. Those were based off what we'd seen when we deployed the mobile unit. And, and what we knew or where we knew we had problems in the past with, with speeding. The results, they, they said the fixed locations for speed cameras, they denied each one of those. And they said that they were not the least intrusive method. I contacted DOT today to try to get the parameters they used to determine what's the least intrusive method. And I was told that I could call back with each location that was denied. Once they kind of get their feet underneath them, because I know they, they had quite a few of these that they sent out. Yesterday, that we can go back in and they can tell us the reason why they denied each one of the locations. I know a lot of the. Mobile locations. The explanation on the denial was is that we had not put the mobile unit out there prior to January first. Of twenty twenty four. So we started in September eighteenth. We had like, you know, what's that, four months till the end of the year. I know we had some issues with the mobile, but. If, if we didn't put it out there prior to. Even though we know we've got a problem there from past history or we've got complaints from residents, we were denied. So we've got to look at that, that there's some avenues we can talk about down the road.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, we're still doing the research. We'll be scheduling something with the council, but I want to. Just with the approved locations. The prior, one of the prior, prior slides. Of the sixty, seventy six deployments of that mobile unit. Seventy one of those were at the request of our residents. Think that's a pretty important stat. Seventy six deployments. In those fifty eight different locations, seventy one of those. Came from our residents.
Seventy one of the requests. We hadn't hit all of them yet, which is when we put it into the permit process, some of those were still in there. But we didn't get to them by, by January first, and so we got, we got denied. So I think the, the. When I look at the red light numbers at the intersections, that's the ones that concern me more so than the speeding at the intersections. I do think it's important. I mean, when you look at just the raw numbers ballpark figure. You're basically got a thousand cars that are going through an intersection at eleven miles an hour or more over the speed limit. And I don't know how else to stop it. So. That concerns me a little bit. The mobile unit, my biggest concern with the locations that they gave us is, is. As the permit sits today. We cannot be responsive to the community when the community calls unless that's one of those twenty eight. Locations that we've already got the permit for. I'll tell you that twenty ninth. You know, the, some of the streets that we have permits for is certain blocks in the twenty ninth Avenue, fiftieth Street. Tenth Avenue. But we would get, we got a permit for the twenty six hundred block of twenty ninth Avenue. We got denied for the twenty seven hundred block of twenty, twenty ninth Avenue, but we got approved for the twenty eight hundred block of twenty ninth Avenue. So. There's some stuff I got to dive into here and I, and again, I'm. I'm not taking a shot at the, at DOT. I think that they had this thing kind of put in their lap. And, and they did the best they could. I know the people, when they put a panel together to, to. Decide whether a, a location was legitimate or not. It included, there was somebody from the Iowa Chiefs Association, the Sheriff's Association, the State Patrol. There were seven or eight people on it. That sat down and went through these. I think they had two hundred and. Twenty eight jurisdictions. They had a hundred and thirty nine fixed requests. And they only approved eleven of them. They had two hundred and eleven mobile site requests and only a hundred and twenty two got approved statewide. So I feel pretty good. Again, I, I felt good going into the permit because. It was new, but because we'd also done our research, we had the numbers to show why we were doing what we were doing. And now we put it in and. Got the permit. So again, when you look at the, the numbers, seventy five percent of the red light violations or violations at hundred, one hundred and East Post. A red light, ninety nine percent of the citations at thirteen and one fifty one are red light. We are going to lose those speeding violations in there. But again, those are pretty significant. Significant numbers. So the next steps, so. I think I said before, when the, when the, the new ordinance came out, we were allowed to continue to run as we'd been running. When they came out with the new ordinance back in May, we knew that we had signage issues at two locations. We've got a sign up on one fifty one. That's about. Fifty feet beyond where it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be between five hundred and one thousand feet. I think we're at one thousand and fifty feet, which wasn't a requirement when we put it in, but it is now. And then we've got a sign that we have to put down on highway one hundred down by forty fourth. Because we have to have a sign coming into every thoroughfare within the city or into the city. So we had to shut them off yesterday at four. We'll get the signage up. Talked to Mike Barclay about it. We're going to work on that, that we have to get DOT permits because it's DOT right away. But that should be hopefully fairly quick. We did try to apply. When we applied for the permits and they told us they weren't going to approve any new signage until the permits were issued or denied. So we'll keep working on that. Once those are out. The red light cameras will get turned back on at the fixed locations, which are the two big intersections. The mobile, mobile unit will announce where that's going to be. That's not going to change. We'll do that twelve hours in advance. And then we'll deploy it to one of those permitted locations. We'll put some additional information on our webpage about the process that we're dealing with. We'll put the approved locations for the webs or the mobile deployments. So people know we're operating where we're supposed to be operating. I do, when we talked about signage and stuff, I said this the other day on Friday to, to this group is. Tom Jordan over Public Works and his guys with the signs and the streetlights and stuff have been Johnny on the spot through this process. So I, I wanted to give a shout out to them. During this. I think that's all I have. And if you've got questions, I'll be happy to answer. I know that we've got some follow up we have to do with DOT and, and with council, but that's kind of where we sit.
Yes, go ahead.
Just if I can, really quick, Ed, just one also important point. For the viewing audience. As it relates to this system. The red light cameras. The, for this, for, for the red lights and running through those red lights, that, that will still be in effect. And is not subject to. The state regulations. So. Just want to make sure that we're out, we'll, we'll make sure we're, we're updating in focus in some of our other communication tools. But I just want to make sure we're avoiding any sort of confusion. Given the announcement that came out in the media yesterday with respect to these, these cameras, because there is the distinction between the speed. And the red light camera. So we want to be very clear. In communicating that out.
I think it's very important. There'd be perception out there that. They're all turned off.
Yeah.
And so I think clarifying, clarifying that to the public is going to be important. So. Okay, and questions for chief? Oh, go ahead.
So going forward, can win or can you now? Request additional locations for the mobile unit?
So we could, we could appeal the ones that got denied. We can put in for new locations. They'll accept them, but they won't issue permits until July of twenty twenty six. Because that's in that ordinance that no new locations will be approved for two years by the DOT.
But what if the appeal is approved, then it can go.
I think the appeal, the appeal approves and, and we say we want to go down on Fifth Avenue. And they, and we can show them, hey, here's why, and here's the numbers and they approve it, then we're good to go. We're good to go there.
Gotcha. But if a, a resident. Requests. A location, does it get put onto a spreadsheet and that's going to be the request for permits for twenty twenty six or? How would that work?
Haven't got that far yet.
That's some of the preparation and evaluation and we're going to develop some recommendation for council that will. Make sure that we circle back up with.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Great. Go ahead.
Chief. So there were fifty eight mobile locations requested. Twenty nine of which were denied, fifty percent.
Fifty eight total that included, that included, they counted each camera. At the fixed as a separate one. So there was five.
Oh.
Five cameras at the two fix sold fifty three.
Okay. So but for the mobile. For the locations that were denied, did I hear you correctly that one of the. One of the criteria was is that we weren't operational prior to a given date for those locations?
At that location. Yeah.
Do you have any insight as to? Why that ought to make a difference given?
That's an interpretation, their interpretation of the code as it was written, that if, if you had a system that was already up and running, you were allowed to use it. If it wasn't in that particular location, you were not.
Thank you. Just so I'm clear, that is it eleven or thirteen miles? I thought I heard you say both.
Eleven, it's eleven for speeding, thirteen if you turn right on red.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the thousand, you gave a, the statistic of a thousand. Drivers, thousand, thousand cars, is that?
A thousand, roughly a thousand cars. When you look at the, we had like eight thousand some odd or. Speeding citations, seven thousand were from the mobile unit, which leaves roughly eight thousand that are going through those two intersections. At eleven miles an hour or more, which when you think about East Post and highway one hundred, that's at fifty five mile an hour. Speed limit where we had a fatality and that's concerning. Again, if, if, if ultimately we can't get those speed cameras back on. We'll try to figure something else out. If we have to pay overtime to have somebody sit down there, we'll do what we have to do.
Any other questions for chief? Thank you. Next is a discussion. Regarding Parks Turf Management Plan. Mr. Parks Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as, as you know, as our park and recreation agency, we have a, a desire to reach higher in accomplishing. Accreditation along with that with. Making informed decisions. We put together a turf maintenance program really to help. Set the. Level of service for managed acres. So in the, in the program, you'll see we have pretty much. Providing a level of service for the different six hundred acres of plus acres of managed property that we have. With the different types of management that we do with each priority item. Why we're doing it. Like I said earlier, our, we want to reach higher, have accreditation and part of that accreditation is really. Taking all the practices and making sure that you have. That, that guide that really speaks to everything that you do as an agency. But bottom line is really making informed decisions. As we were in September, I know any turf manager was thinking, thinking a lot about the grounds, but earlier. In spring and summer, we had a really high wet, wet year. And there was a lot of, a lot of concerns in, in regards to tall grass and weeds throughout the community. And I know that you've heard a lot of that, those concerns. And so really level setting what those expectations are across the whole grounds, but also helping us make informed decisions as we go through. Budget, things of that nature to really. Get down to the nuts and bolts of, of how we operate and in what level of service we should be providing. In the document, we have different levels of services, really ranking from one being the, the most that we do on the ground. And it gets less intense as we go through all the way down to level five, which is our natural areas that. Wouldn't say that they're completely maintenance free, but there is limited maintenance that we do from a. Managing invasive weeds. Really from, from this document, what, why we're presenting it to council and really looking for direction. If there's properties that you see within these, this document that you want us to re-review, reevaluate. These are the current practices that we're doing as an agency of. For these properties, but we know that you hear from a lot of your constituents and have areas that. You see out in the community and we're certainly very open to, to relook and reevaluate. Or answer any questions that you seen in the two documents that we provided you, which was the turf maintenance program and then also the document that we. Use as a working document to really. Level set, we're able to evaluate the cost per acre and, and really evaluate each of those properties. When we look at. Expectation levels and. How we're managing them.
Yep.
Any questions?
Ready for questions?
Yes.
Okay, questions? Go ahead.
Just quicker. I know these are not big areas, but I think they're very, very visible areas and that's some of our roundabouts.
Yes.
That the ones that have just grass and or that are landscaped. So I know it's not a lot of square footage, but they're very visible and people see them all the time as well as our visitors. Where do those fall in these levels?
So it depends on the location. So anything on the Sixth Avenue or Seventh Avenue corridor. Roundabouts are going to be level twos and we do herbicide treatments for those. The Albernat. The Echo Hill, those are getting to more of the level threes side of things. The Cornhenge. Is landscaped, so there's not really turf management that we do on that, that property.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Thanks.
The tiny, tiny park with the Marion sign in it, is that level two? At the entrance?
Tiny parts of the sign in it.
No, I. No, I, on Seventh Avenue. The old McDonald's.
Oh, that would be a level, level three. There's or no, that'd be considered a level two. That's a ground that we we really don't maintain. We just maintain the the landscaping there, so.
Yeah. So we don't mow that?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
I guess just to clarify again, and I don't remember if you said it during this, but for the public's sake. So the difference between level one and level two, since they're labeled the same as high profile areas, it's just the irrigation, right?
Yeah, so level ones really is irrigation, whether that's manual or automatic. So there's the athletic fields. We don't really have automation on our athletic fields like how the loud ball diamonds, but we do have a water reel that we manually put out there to water those grounds.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
And certainly we'll continue to touch base on this as we're looking through our budget and things of that nature. We'll look at all our evaluations and utilize this as a tool for us when it comes to that time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Seth. Dave Hockett, you have the next two.
All right, this is a discussion regarding the establishment of an uptown parking committee to essentially review the findings of the uptown parking study we had completed just this past year. As council recall, the study was aimed at addressing both current and future projected parking needs in the uptown district, related in effort to minimize maximize the existing parking infrastructure, but minimizing the need for, you know, major capital investments to parking in the future. You know, this, this, this recommendations really came from a group of uptown business owners along with their consultants, city staff, again analyzing those peak demands during the weekdays and those peak demands, obviously during special events. So one of the, one of the main items out of the, out of the recommendations was to monitor the parking situations, how things ebb and flow in the uptown, as businesses come and go as the park develops. So one of those major items was to was really, how do you monitor that? How do you react to that? And we're looking at establishing an uptown parking committee that'll really help us facilitate that process. The committee will be focused primarily on looking at the study's findings and the implementation strategy that's on the screen and determine, you know, where do we go next? What's the next strategy? We have short term, long term, intermediate items on there and and really study those, review those, work with staff, committee members and residents that may be interested in in what is going on in the area. With that committee, then ultimately they would be making recommendations back to the city council, possibly the planning zoning commission, if there was a project that had a parking component to it as well. So there'll just be another sounding board, again, hopefully made up of folks that live, work, play kind of in that uptown district and really have an understanding of what is going on there today and tomorrow with the parking situations. So we are recommending establishment of this uptown parking plan committee. Again, it'll be tasked with reviewing all those projects and then providing the ultimate recommendation back to the council. If the council does desire to establish this committee, we would be seeking names to put on that committee at a future meeting. And again, if you do direct us to proceed, we'll be working to establish some communities or the committee's goals and objectives. And ultimately depending on the type of committee, how formal it gets, if we have to establish bylaws and whatnot. So this will be a kind of ongoing committee. It won't really expire, won't. As long as we're having a parking, we'll we'll be meeting it. It won't be, could be a monthly meeting, could be a quarterly meeting. Again, it all depends on the level of activity regarding the implementation of of those items. So questions?
This is, this will be a formally formally established committee like like boards and commissions. Okay.
Yep.
And so, okay. Will we get to see the sort of the guidelines or the bylaws or whatever?
That's what we'll be developing. If the council directs us to proceed, that's that's the items we'll be developing prior to one of the future meetings.
Okay, so that's that's what we're looking for, direction. We'll go back, put together some things and bring it back to council for feedback.
Direction this evening, right now?
Yep.
Okay, so first of all, any questions? And then if anybody has objections to it, speak up. So go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, Dave, so you're going to, one of the first steps, if this goes forward, is then to basically pull a policy or a guidance document or whatever for it. Within that, will you specify kind of the background or the viewpoint or the experience base that members of the committee should should bring to the table? And I ask that, I mean, obviously business representation. But I'm thinking of people who either have experience with or it's or actually because of their personal situation, ADA considerations. You know, is there going to be kind of a qualification of the people that we would want to have on the committee?
Called the Berta Ryan.
Counselperson Harper, that's excellent feedback. And that would, that would be very helpful for staff as we work on putting together some parameters around this. This is going to be very similar to what we did with the AVT, the airport visioning team, where we recommend a structure to get your feedback, to work it in, to make sure that what we are setting up is reflective of the vision of the council. And then we can go ahead and make sure that we're recruiting the residents that build those, the expertise that the council deems important. So we don't need that right now, but I would certainly ask that if there are things that are important that you you think we incorporate and also trust that we're going to be working with our partners at at Medco and the Chamber on making sure that we are looking at the right mix and incorporating those types of details. So welcome that feedback. But yes, that's, that would be the ideal situation.
Okay, thanks.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, Dave, I'm glad to see this being put together because I think once we had the parking study, my concern was the parking study would sit there longer than I would like. So I'm glad to see this moving along in this direction. You have any any idea about how long it may take to go through the different steps before the committee is put together and ready to start meeting? I mean, how far out do you think that might be?
I'd like to come back to that question. If we're getting direction to proceed, I can definitely lay out a better timetable after after this meeting. But I don't have a definitive date for you.
Okay. All right. I'll hold you to that.
Yep. And I would like to point out, I mean, even though the plan's done, I mean, we have started talking about EV chargers, that was an element to it. Amber's presented the wayfinding, again, that's a community wide one, but there will be a uptown component to businesses, museums, parking, and then we've also been monitoring the parking situations with the the model that the consultant gave us. So whether or without the committee, we've already started moving forward on elements of the plan.
Okay, so is there anyone who has an objection to forming the committee? You got your direction. Okay, next item.
All right, this is a discussion regarding the extension of the development moratorium along Highway 13 or portions of Tower Terrace Road and then portions of the central corridor along Sixth and Seventh Avenues. Current moratorium is set to expire here, just about a month from today, November 9. We're proposing an extension to July 1, 2025. This ultimately reflects the timing of all the comprehensive plan and then some of the immediate actions before the adoption of the comprehensive plan, as well as immediately after the adoption of the comprehensive plan. We have and targeted kind of the project timeline, you can see where we're at today in the comprehensive plan. We're nearing the, it looks a little short there, we've consolidated a few dates, but we're preparing to receive that draft plan mid-October-ish from the consultant. That allows staff to start digesting what's in the plan, not just beyond a land use map, but the actual meat and potatoes of the plan, the policies, the recommendations, the objectives of the plan. And we'll start identifying where the plan may be in conflict with the zoning or the zoning may be in conflict with the plan. We'll start seeing some of the strategies regarding specific uses. If we're looking at a major highway, here's the use recommendations for a major divided highway versus a collector's street. So we'll start looking at those. We'll start seeing the overlap of the of the uses within the moratorium. So between receiving the plan in October, the draft plan in October and beginning that formal review process, we'll start identifying where we where we can start making some recommendations. We can a consultant as well, potentially to help us and assist us in drafting ordinances and plans that might reflect some of those goals and objectives laid out in the draft. So come adoption of the comprehensive plan in March, we got that running start to the start, you know, we got that running start to the starting line to actually begin amending the code to reflect the comprehensive plan instead of having to wait for the plan to finish then start. We'll be doing a lot of background over the next four or five months to get us there and start. So hopefully our goal, of course, would be to have a significant portions of the moratorium addressed prior to July 1, 2025. That's our goal. So yeah, the extension is ultimately till July 1, 2025 allows us to complete the plan and start implementing major sections of the plan specifically related to the moratorium.
Hey, go ahead, Steve.
So so I understand my my initial concern was all of a sudden everybody thinks there's not going to be any activity until July 1. But if I'm understanding this correctly, for example, I'm going to go back to a couple of weeks ago where we had our gentleman from Manchester come in about an automotive repair shop. That we don't have to wait until July 1 if we want to make that decision. That after the first of the year, we're going to be far enough along with the comp plan and additional information where we're going to be able to look at a specific business and or activity or location better than we could a couple of weeks ago.
Correct.
So that, am I correct in my thinking there?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. So so as long as we're able to do that, if somebody comes in with a specific request where we can deal with that more directly than we have been able to do in the past, because I've fully supported, let's get through the comp plan process, complete it, not try to carve out little pieces here and there. I'm fine with extending it out that far because otherwise I would have a, I would be concerned about it. But with the process as you described, as long as we can still deal with those specific activities, I'm okay.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay. Thanks, Dave. Next item is the agenda review. First item is on page 2A6. Any item prior to 86 that we need to discuss? Questions? All right, we'll go to 86, Leanne.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a resolution that comes forward to city council annually as part of the part of the annual tax increment finance certification process. These internal loan advances allow Marion to reimburse the general fund for expenses related to economic activity. Examples include the payments to Medco, Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance, legal expenses for development agreements and the different legislation that comes forward and staff time.
Questions for Leanne? Okay, next item is yours also, Leanne.
This is an update to the schedule of fees. This first slide is just showing two administrative changes. For the delinquent fee assessment would just be added to all delinquent fee assessments, not just utility. And then on the solid waste special collections, we're simply adding a couple of items that weren't specifically listed, but those fees already were being utilized. And then for the fingerprinting, we had done comparable cities and they all seem to be charging the same rate. So we're just updating that. And then the big change on the next slide is the automated collections. We wanted to make sure these fees got approved in alignment with the final reading of the solid waste ordinance, as well as the approval of the policy. None of these fees should be new to you. We've published these several times and talked about them several times. Did just want to note for the public that the effective date, it goes off of the billing date. So all bills that are dated December 1 or thereafter, these new rates would be reflected. And then noting that on the card exchange fee, that fee is waived for the first 90 days. So we have that going into effect on January 14, 90 days after the initial implementation on October 14.
Okay. Questions on those? Thanks, Leanne. Mike Barkelo, D1.
Yeah, so just wanted to talk through this one. So this is a new policy. So we took this out of the ordinance so that if we need to make modifications, so it's easier to make the the changes to this resolution on the policy versus change the ordinance with the three readings. So this is basically for those that cannot get the carts to the curb. This is the process that we go through to determine if they're eligible or not. There is a one year grace period for those that already have that service now because we do have a doctor's sign off, that's now part of it. This policy was borrowed from Cedar Rapids and just reworded, so. Didn't know if there's any questions regarding the policy.
Go ahead. For the residents that are currently being served and get that grace period, how are they being communicated to so that they know that and then know that they need them?
Yeah, after this is actually officially adopted, what we'll do is we'll send a letter out to those 100 residents that have it today and say, this is the new policy. So if you have a doctor within the next year, your grandfather didn't, but go ahead and do this, you know, do a special doctor's appointment. So we'll do a cover letter and send that out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Grant.
Regarding the doctor authorization of the request, might not be the best way to say it. If a person has a disability that is permanent, it seems a little counterproductive for us to ask for an annual update from their physician that that condition exists. So in this, and I I looked at the, I looked at the policy document, but I don't remember. Is there a place for the physician to say this is a permanent disability? I, if it's, yeah, if it's not there, I would recommend retrofitting that into it. So again, if it's a permanent condition, it's not going to get better over time. The physician ought to just state that and it just lessens the whole transaction. Okay, so that's my thought.
There is a check mark on the actual application form that says whether it's a temporary or a permanent disability.
Okay. So if so, if that's the case and the doctor supports it, then if we can find a way not to cause them to have that reauthorized every year.
The only thing that we want to do is to make sure that is the resident that that is filling out that form still resides there or had they moved. So having the yearly certification would make sure that we are providing the right service to that right, to the right resident.
But, okay, so that that's residency confirmation. But would it's, would that necessitate a physician saying they still live there?
If if somebody moves, then they they would let us, we would, we would be, go ahead.
So I'm going to read the section of the policy for renewals after this first year. So they're valid for 12 months. Public Works will send a renewal verification form to the resident. Renewals that do not require a physician's signature because a physician has already opined that residence disability is permanent must be returned within two weeks from the date specified. So it is just to maintain that they are still a resident at that location.
Thank you. Okay. All right, that handles that then.
Okay, any questions on D2 before we move on to D3? Temporary construction easement? All right, D3, Mike?
Yeah, so we just wanted to highlight D3. So this is allowing us to release the plans to go out to bid for Tower Terrace and Irish Drive. So I know that was a council priority. Yeah, so we just wanted to highlight D three. So this is uh, allowing us to release the plans to go out to bid for Tower Terrace and Irish Drive. So I know that was a council priority to get that. So instead of going flash like it is today, it actually go to colors. So just some highlights from it. Uh, the estimate, engineer's estimate is a hundred and ten thousand. We'll receive the bids on October twenty ninth. They will come to city council on November seventh for consideration. And then it has a May twenty twenty-five completion date. So it depends on hardware and when they can get that in there. Luckily here, we're not talking about mast arms. We're talking about cameras and some uh, push buttons and stuff like that, but sometimes those do have a longer lead time. Some of those work they could do during the winter, but they do have to do some of the work with the push buttons with concrete. So if weather hits, they won't be able to work during the winter. So it just kind of depends on weather. So that's why we have the May twenty twenty-five completion.
Okay, Sarah, you have comment question?
This is, this is just a comment and a thank you for the work to get this moving. And I've seen the activity at the intersection. I'm assuming has, I don't, they're doing work around there. So um, but just yesterday I was leaving the Y and there were, there was a car van that pulled out, then there was a car, then me and that van pulled out heading eastbound on Tower Terrace off of Southbound Irish Drive, pulled out and an ABC disposal truck had to take the shoulder screeching to a halt and almost took out that other corner, the southeast corner. Um, poles that were there because they went sliding out to avoid hitting this van that had turned and out into traffic. So um, as the traffic at this intersection and on the road increases, I'm happy to see that we're moving forward with this because the firsthand, everybody sat there and watched it. So I'm glad that we're moving forward. So thank you.
I agree. I, I've seen a number of near misses and just issues there. I think this is going to be very helpful. And I think once the, once Tower Terrace opens to C Avenue, we're going to have the increase in traffic anyway. And so just it, we're just getting ahead of it. And appreciate it. All right, uh, D four, any questions on that? It's not marked for discussion, but remember if questions. All right, the next item is A one under the abstention. Founder, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro temp on this one.
A one, Leanne.
This one is similar to the one I presented on earlier in the agenda. This allows the city to reimburse the general fund for costs related to the airport with tax increment finance.
Questions? Anyone on this item? Okay, with that, back to the mayor. Oh. Sorry, are there any questions on the other segments of the agenda with the mayor's abstention? Do you want through D four? Okay, with that, back to the regular agenda.
All right, under the regular agenda, A one and C one are not marked. Any questions on those? We'll have C two, Seth.
As part of the Central Plaza project, uh, we have some owner supplied items and one of those items is identifying a unit to facilitate uh, skate rentals. Uh, much early in the process, um, it was a desire to, to look at a traditional trailer unit. Uh, we wanted something a little bit uh, higher grade uh, as we're uh, building a state of art facility uh, within our plaza. Uh, pop box was identified early on um, as part of this project. Um, and we've identified a location and really uh, designed uh, area specific uh, for the skating. And without further ado, I'll present uh, the skate shack. Uh, this is a custom unit uh, uh, created by Box Pop. Uh, really converting uh, those uh, storage container units into a modern uh, unit that we could utilize uh, for the winter time for, uh, for ice skating. Uh, as you'll see, we have two uh, windows. Uh, this is a heating, heated unit. Also has all the capabilities. It's insulated. Uh, there's electrical. Uh, we'll have point of sale within the structure. Uh, this is also just a um, a conceptual or just a, um, there's some details that are missing within the picture. We'll have outlets on the outside so we can uh, decorate it during the winter time. We'll also have lights uh, on the sides here too. Uh, that is a navy blue uh, for the unit uh, that matches uh, the color scheme. We wanted to look at a neutral color. We had discussions early on or with the chamber about thinking about colors. I wanted, I was wanting to do a caboose color. Uh, that wasn't uh, too looked at. We looked at the old popcorn shack that was kind of red, white and just ended up uh, doing something neutral uh, in that aspect. Uh, and then also having the wording skate shack. So it's identifiable. Uh, this is something that we can also convert. Uh, when we get to our summer uh, uh, summertime, uh, we can uh, change those letters out to uh, snack shack and those window units uh, that were located up there, uh, this whole thing flips up into a summertime to open air. Uh, and we can move, we'll move this out to uh, the Lau facility, uh, our, the amphitheater and be able to facilitate vendor sales uh, specifically hopefully be- beverages there. Uh, we also have the capability of, of uh, digital, uh, digital uh, marketing uh, within the structure also. Any questions as far as this, the skate shack, this is a new amenity for, for the community, so.
Yeah, first of all, I, I really like the idea. Um, you hear a lot of people uh, talk about being able to buy popcorn back in the day at, in the city square park. And um, I think this will be a good interactive feature in our parks. My, my question though is how easy or difficult is it to transport it? Because my concern, especially with
Yeah.
we're just redoing the plaza and we're just redoing the, the park area up there. So like, do you need like a big truck to like drive through the grass and?
Yeah, so what we did for design purposes is this area right here, we designed this uh, area to be reinforced uh, turf, uh, specifically for our vehicles and heavier machinery. And that's where we'll actually uh, take this unit out into the street and uh, to be able to mobilize it, uh, we, we'll either do that in-house. Uh, we'll look at in-house, but we also uh, would look at uh, contractual uh, vice versa. Uh, it's about four hundred fifty dollars to uh, mobilize it out uh, to the uh, to Lau. And so that's something we'll have within our budget expenditures.
Yeah, that's a really interesting, I didn't realize that. So that's really interesting and I'm smart. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Seth, somewhat in that um, same line of um, inquiry, I, I went to the Box Pop site uh, or Box Pop site, and I noticed they had several different models of this.
Yeah.
Um, one of them comes with wheels. Did we evaluate that? Because that could just end up being pulled out.
Yeah, yes, uh, absolutely. The uh, the one with wheels, I, I don't know if that was a full twenty, twenty-foot unit that you looked at. Um, but really we were trying to avoid uh, having that trailer look and, and really wanted to try to m- make it modern. Uh, this is something that too, with it being there for two to three months, we do need to anchor it uh, into the system uh, or anchor it to the ground, uh, because it is a temporary, just to make sure we're following standards. So it was something we evaluated, but felt like this was uh, the better move.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Can you go back to the map?
Yeah.
So is, that was, what is the thought? I'm assuming that little red circle is where you want to put it, right?
Yes.
What is the thought process to putting it there instead of like in the green space? Because it's not blocking the doors?
Yeah, so there's, it's not blocking any doors. Uh, it actually will, um, it'll be right by where uh, the door that leads to the mechanics. Uh, so we'll have easy flow from a, uh, operation standpoint. Uh, because for this unit here that will, um, that whole back unit will bring in skate racks, uh, have skate racks on the backside. If there's any um, additional skates, we'll have a skate sharpener within the uh, uh, the actual mechanic's side of room. The other component that came to it is we have to have uh, a concrete pad uh, for it. So if we did it in the grass, we would need to put some sort of reinforcement uh, where we put that uh, or put the uh, uh, the skate shack, uh, but also needs to be level uh, too. Um, the other addition was also uh, utility hookups because it, it is electrical. Um, we do have electrical hookups uh, for, uh, for this um, for this unit. Um, we'll have, uh, this also will be um, Wi-Fi uh, data to be able to um, have the um, point of sale uh, purposes. The only thing that we won't have to it is, is water. Uh, we'll have a self-contained uh, hand washing sink. So if we wanted to facilitate any type of concessions or um, even for out at Lau, we need to have a hand washing basin uh, according to Iowa Public Health.
That was going to my question when you said you don't have water. Um, so, and this is a, I like this. I think we just discuss whether, how that positions. I just hate to see something.
Yeah.
You've got this new visual and this beautiful setting. So I make sure we put it in the right spot, that it doesn't look like it's blocking our, our, you know, refurbished.
No, no, and everything, yeah, and everything, um, everything on this side is, is really, we have the, the meeting room here, um, the main lobby. And this is really uh, towards the side of it is really where it is. It sits over our um, um, the pit where we have the mechanics for the splash pad. So um, from an operation standpoint, we'll have the Zamboni unit coming out of here. Uh, that will uh, enter on this pad. We'll have uh, skating coming on access under here and we're able to kind of loop lines around here for um, for the rental. So trying to space things out so it's not all ingested and spread it out a little bit too.
And so it'll be snacks in the summer, skates in the winter, but no food in the winter then if it's?
Uh, if we do any food, it's going to be prepackaged items. I, I think really what we want to look at is opportunities, work with the chamber, work with the uh, businesses and make sure we're not duplicating services. We don't want to take company or take business away. Uh, we want to enhance uh, enhance the environment. And so we can, we'll probably do like um, uh, like hot beverages, like, you know, give hot cocoa packets with water um, uh, in, in prepackaged snacks and things of that nature.
Thanks.
Yeah.
And staffing wise, I assume it's all budgeted?
Staffing wise, yeah. We'll discuss more on the staffing of the operations plans. Uh, we'll come back to council with the, with uh, speaking about the specific operations for the plaza and that will be stuff that we'll have implemented into the budget process.
Seth, you're going to, in the very near future, we're going to be coming and bringing uh, some recommended fees for the operations of it, because that's going to be the next step as, as we start implementing.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
This is related to all of this, but not directly about this
Yeah.
um, structure. Did I happen to detect a heat, um, a heat exchanger uh, being delivered to the site uh, here for the chiller unit? I s- I see a, a, a metal, metal structure with probably six or eight uh, fans uh, sitting there on a, on a big pallet. So I just wonder, is that part of the chiller equipment?
Yeah, I would have to confirm with staff. I don't know to, to be completely honest, but it, it sounds like that's what that is, but I'll have to confirm.
Well, I, I was just really excited to see that. Now I'm gonna, I'm gonna be a little depressed for a bit if it's not.
Okay, I'll take your word for it, Grant. Anyone else?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
So skate rentals out of it, potentially some food, popcorn would be fantastic, like Gage said. Um. Anything else? I mean, has it been determined if there'll be a fee to use the loop?
That will be part of the discussions of.
So this could potentially be where you buy a ticket to or would that be?
We'll have point of sale from, uh, we'll look at emissions, uh, skate rentals, uh, concessions. If we do any commodities types of stuff, it's going to be like hat and men's. Uh, to, we want to keep people warm. We're talking about a winter time activity. Um, but so yeah, emissions would be, be um, is, is something we're very um, going to be bringing towards council.
And then if it's going to be part of the year here, part of the year at Lau, is there a specific location at Lau that's already been determined?
Yeah, so, yeah, the back patio we designed uh, to be able to take that traffic. And so we'll place it on the back patio. So it'll be
On the concrete that's on the board?
Yes, yeah. And we have electrical hookups right there. So um, we can, uh, we'll uh, take the skate, skate racks out, be able to bring in coolers um, to be able to power that out and um, uh, be able to facilitate some sales there.
Thank you.
Uh, staff just confirmed that is the ice loop condenser unit.
Did you have any doubt? Grant identified it. I'm sure, I'm, I believe him. All right, but thanks for confirming. Anything else for Seth? Thanks.
Thank you.
Or you have something?
When was it going to be?
There's about a, uh, ten to twelve weekly time.
Oh, so this is, could be here this year?
Could be, yes, okay.
Very good. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
All right. Items D one and E one are not marked. Any questions on those? Hey, Dave. E two and E three.
Okay, these, these go with E one, the previous item, and then E two and E three are essentially the same plenary and final site development plan. They're identical. So I'm just kind of presenting them as, as one item uh, for the meeting. Uh, so this is the location, uh, just kind of south of the Dollar General location on East Post Road, north of um, Baptist Church there on the intersection. It's behind that multi-story office building, commercial building on the site highlighted by red. The applicants are proposing two fourplex buildings. There are a total of eight units, which is quite under the allowable amount. They could go quite a bit denser if they wanted. It'll come with sixteen garage stalls and twelve surface parking spots. So it's well over parked for the number of units provided. And this was reviewed by the planning zoning commission and they are recommending approval of both the uh, preliminary and final site development plans. So looking at the site a little closer, primary point of entrance will be off East Post Road. It's an oversized driveway there today. Uh, two lanes out, one lane in. At the time this was constructed, uh, with some of the projects that were, were proposed originally, uh, they needed that extra width to accommodate the requirements at that time, about twenty years ago. So it is an oversized entrance. It's a one-way in. Uh, like I said, it will be tucked behind the existing building in this location. Uh, so looking at the buildings, we have um, fourplex on the north side, south side with the parking, uh, with the garages in between the two locations. Um, there is two points of entrance. Well, one for each, sorry, one for each building, uh, and have their set of garages on either side. Uh, property is, they intend to use the existing landscaping that's in this area. There's a large tree mass in this location and a large tree mass on the south location. Uh, they're hoping to preserve those, but as we know, as construction gets into it, um, hopefully they are able to save them, but they may not, reality may say they, they can't be saved for whatever reason. Uh, so they have provided a, a landscape plan that does show, uh, if they do lose those tree masses, those existing tree masses, they will have standards for replacement and these do meet the uh, uh, landscaping requirements in the current code. I know previously with the rezoning, questions have come up regarding lighting uh, and security cameras. There will be basic lighting on the site, nothing too much. They're trying to minimize the light trespass um, around the site. Uh, the cameras, I was not able to get an answer to that, but Mr. Merrill will be here on Thursday. Uh, and he can address that specifically if I can't find out prior to the meeting. Uh, um, again, planning zoning commission did recommend approval of the site. Moving on to the elevations, a little hard to see here in the images, but this is a, a uh, a brick facade on all four sides. I'm sorry, all three sides, uh, with the returns on the backside. Uh, multifamily is required to have fifty percent brick. Um, so it is over fifty percent, just not on all sides. Uh, there is an exterior stairway. Uh, it's discouraged, but not prohibited. Uh, when it is, when exterior stairways are provided, uh, we do like them to be directed in toward the property, not readily visible from the um, public right of ways. Uh, so these, these uh, entrances are um, inward on the property. The garage, very similar, again, brick material. Um, the area somewhat visible from the street, it will be brick and they'll do the brick course across the fronts of both garages. And then finally, again, moving into the final site development plan, it's identical to the approved preliminary or the proposed preliminary site development plans. And again, the commission recommended approval of that as well.
You ready for questions?
Yep.
Questions?
Go ahead, Will. What's the blue on the map?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I should have mentioned that. Uh, those are the required uh, tension basins uh, for the site uh, for the uh, that they're required to meet. Ultimately, uh, you can see the purple. Ultimately, uh, you can see the purple lines there. I looked, I looked purple on the screen here. Uh, those are the intakes to the basins. This basin to the north, and ultimately to the north, there's that large uh, basin uh, behind the Dollar General. Uh, and just south of, uh, I forget the name of the street there on the south side or on the north side of Dollar General, there's another street. It'll all funnel into a city basin to the north.
Is that also collecting the water from the building that's already there? Is that why there's so, there's two and they're so large?
Uh, most of this basin currently kind of hard to see here. There's an intake in this general location, so a lot of this water is already discharged into that basin to the north. This, this site did not really have any warm water on its own. So it may be picking up some additional on this backside as it flows this way, but a lot of this basin already goes to the north. So they're collecting what they're creating with the new development, or the new phase of this development.
Anyone else? Okay, anything else, Dave?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
Cool, thanks.
Okay, that brings us to the closed session.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation as permitted under section twenty-one point five one J and section twenty-one point five one C of the Code of Iowa. And this is for separate matters.
Second.
Then moved in second to adjourn to closed session regarding real estate transactions and litigation as permitted under the Code of Iowa. Can we have the legal counsel's statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, sections twenty-one point five one C and twenty-one point five one J.
Thank you. Any discussion before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Missman?
Yes.
Mayor Abou Asli?
Yes.
Ms. Mensor?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Sterned?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. We're now adjourned to closed session.